Gary Gilbert, eleven by million.
Who is?
Isn't that good?
Who has not been?
Is it technical?
Yeah.
Except for the.
Wait, may I try where's the jump? Could be all set. So, okay.
Thank you very much.
Good.
No, I don't.
No, I don't.
Okay, um, I'm Gary Gilbert, eleven by no, yeah, I just want to beg your patience for a few minutes. I have a statement to read. About a week ago, I witnessed what I feel was a serious miscarriage of justice when the planning board misused their power in a hearing to to divide the Spyrock Hill property currently under construction into two lots. I'll say right up front, I'm not trying to rehear the case here, and I know that the select board has no jurisdiction over the planning board. However, the select board as managers of our town are the last place anyone can go for an appeal to fairness. Very importantly, it is the select board that controls the spending of our tax dollars. A lot of people don't like the construction going on in Spyrock Hill, and it's very understandable and natural that big changes to trees and topography is disturbing. But property owners do have a fundamental right to do to their properties what they wish within the law. Last week, the owners were denied their right to split their property into two when they, in fact, met all the criteria of something called an A and R division of land. That law is really simple. If you have enough land and enough lot frontage and you can access the lot, you must be granted an A and R. They have more than enough land, more than enough frontage, and the board denied them, saying they have only illusory access to their lot. Anyone can see that they have plenty of access. This forces them to file an appeal, costing them and equally the town fifty to a hundred thousand dollars in legal fees. That's an amount similar to one year's teacher's salary at our school. For me, the tipping point, and why I'm bringing this to your attention, is that the chair of the planning board began legal proceedings, saying that she would not allow discussion of the merits of other A and R plans that have been endorsed by the town. That is a direct quote. She also did not share with the board that our town planner recommended the application be endorsed. Her statement forced the planning board to make a decision without all the facts, denying the applicant their constitutional right of equal treatment under the law. The censorship of directly relevant information is critical because the same planning board just granted an A and R to someone else who had no access to their property across their lot frontage, but were allowed to use the common driveway elsewhere located elsewhere. Another precedent was some time ago when Bobby Atwater, the former owner of Beach Street Cafe, divided up the land where Mosesville Road now stands. He proved he had access simply by driving his little Volkswagen across the property boundary because there was a big huge hill beyond that. For decades, I've been a steadfast supporter of our town boards and served many years on both the planning board and the zoning boards. But this issue has crossed a serious line for me and is not the way our boards should administer our laws. If laws affecting people's property rights and the value of their land are used as a weapon for some people, then they can be used as a weapon against anyone. Our town is now faced with an expensive lawsuit that they cannot win. I'm here to ask you to take action and request the planning board to invite the applicant to reapply, waiving any further fees and present all the facts. Alternatively, you could direct our town attorneys to meet sooner rather than later and resolve this issue before the property owners and the town spend more time and money. It's very disheartening to see such an ill-intended and unfair decision occurring in town I spent years trying to support. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you for your presentation.
I'll send you a copy in writing.
Great. I will add it to the package for the materials meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Good. Is there anyone else present or online who would like to make a comment on items not only done with? I don't see anyone. If there's someone at this, please just. Otherwise, I will go ahead. Thank you very much. Okay. The chairman's report. I have, we see that we, you know, all, we had gotten a copy of a letter from federal offices. We've already, um, the Manchesterbury mornings, they were under the impression that we were going to talk about them on April seventh. We weren't, and I will ask Debbie to help me write a pleasant letter back to them, saying that we had agreed that we would take this item up again in the fall. That's. So, action items are the next thing that we talk about. Are there any new action items that we should consider? Any action items that?
Not, not a new one, but one that I think fell off or maybe was completed and I didn't know, notice, but. Greg, um, the signs that the wayfinding team put together and the select board approved last June still have not been installed to the best of my limited knowledge. And I know there was an issue with the cost, but I thought where we left it was we were going to purchase what we could and then purchase the remaining ones in the fiscal year twenty six budget.
I have an update on that.
Oh, great.
Uh, they have, uh, ordered the signs. They are on order. They are expected to be delivered. Not sure, in the, in the next week or two, something like that, but initially the signs are going to cost the entire sign budget. And they found somebody that would make them for about half that cost.
Okay.
Like six thousand dollars.
But they did order them finally.
They are ordered, and so they are on, on the road to being put up.
Thank you, because I was going to have it added to the list if it hadn't been, but since they've been ordered, I presume they will be installed once.
Don't discuss about reducing the number of redundant signs after the new stylized stuff. What is happening on that? Great.
I believe the committee was going to follow up and do some recommend, you know, recommending what signs to take down. I'm not, I'm not, uh, I'm not up to speed on where that stands. I can find out though.
Yep, the downtown improvement committee is meeting tomorrow. It's that committee that was supposed to do that, so.
Yes.
I, I would be happy to ask them for you, right?
Okay, so I will take that off of your plate, Greg, and Kathy.
Just put it, yeah, just put it on the, um, action item list though, so we don't forget about it.
Yeah.
Uh, just in case no one's noticed it because no one parks up there, the, uh, kind of sort of. You notice that the, uh, they've started outlining some spots out on Central Street. And now it's a matter of, so they're all, they did some laying out, trying to figure out.
Right here?
Yeah. And, you know, uh, how many spots they can get in with the, uh, so. Going to check, that'll probably be done in a couple of days, but they did do the engineering as far as finding out where the spots would go. So, the chance you're not parked in one of the spots, you're probably straddled over one.
That affects you more than anyone else in this.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what we needed to do on action items. The next item on our agenda is to approve and sign the Mason Building Purchase and Sale Agreement. We will agree that we will meet, um, Friday morning at eight forty-five to do that because there are still some details that need to be ironed out. And the next item is to approve and sign the new town administrator contract with Antonio Barletta. You know, discussed that in, in the faculty section and agreed that the contract is, would be of benefit to him and to us. And I would like to have a motion.
I can make that motion. I move that the select board approve town administrator, the town administrator and Antonio Bartlett's contract beginning on July first, twenty twenty-five, and run through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
Is there further discussion? John?
Yes.
And says yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
So, we need to remember to sign that before we leave.
I have it.
You have it. Okay. Um, the next item, you know, we just hear. And you provide for, um, the learning department field as an alternate, I believe. Seeing your application, which shows that you have enthusiasm and experience.
Yeah, a little bit.
Would you explain to us how you came to decide that that's what you wanted to do and what you bring to the, to the position?
Well, um, so I moved to Manchester almost three years ago. Totally love the community and, and really wanted to start to be more involved. I also have the time because I'm, I don't think the word retire, but we, in the last day I'm retiring, so I will have the good time and the, uh, the ability to actually volunteer. I think my, based on my experience, I own my own company. I've had a real estate broker's license. I have a construction supervisor license. I renovated properties both in Massachusetts and Rhode Island. And it just seemed like a good fit for the skill set that I had. And it sounded like a committee that I felt like I was capable of, and I had the skills to be able to contribute, so. That, that would be the reason why.
Great. Thank you. John, you have?
Um, Colleen, really, I, I, it's wonderful that you've raised your hand to do this with only being here in town three years. I guess you've spent a lot of time in front of zoning boards.
Some experience, yes.
Yes, with your, with your background, and so that's great when you can bring a strong background to this. And you're retiring in May, so time is not so much an issue. Have you, have you, uh, provided, have you participated in public service before? Is this your first foray?
This would actually be the first. I've, I've raised kids. I've owned my own company, um, done all of that, which keep, kept me quite really busy, so. Um, I now feel like I have the time and, and, you know, in, in the interest to participate, so. More about now, I finally have time.
Okay. Well, great. Well, I thank you. I mean, all of us are participants in that way, and we're all glad we did it, speaking for everybody.
Most of it.
Good. Sometimes too much.
Your credentials are excellent and a perfect fit for that committee, so I just want to thank you very much for stepping up.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Look forward to it.
Brian?
You sound more articulate than I remember.
I know, it's because it wasn't.
Ah, okay.
So, I think that, uh, I think this is a great opportunity for the town.
And you have some experience with that committee?
Yes, I do. I spent some time on the Yards, uh, zoning board.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you. Ready to go, so thank you for, uh.
Thank you.
Raising your hand.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I moved at the select board appoint Colleen Moore as the second alternate member to the zoning board of appeals for a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
John?
Yes.
And says yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Colleen.
Of course, and that people.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Two other comments.
Okay. The next, uh, up is the quarterly review of the fire chief. Good evening. Will you have your report in front of us? Also headed by email, so.
Um, so we had a busy first quarter. Um, we're right now, we're actually a little bit ahead on emergency responses and we are at the time of year. We, um, have a great opportunity, uh, because of different grants to do a lot of training, staff development, both at the command level as well as the firefighter level, and that's still ongoing, um, probably through the end of this calendar year, uh, that grant will last. I did, um, kind of not knowing what's going on just south of us, I did submit for our theme of reimbursement for what was done thus far. Typically, we do the reimbursements all at the end. I just want to make sure those reimbursements are actually going to show up in our bank account, uh, before we spend all of it, so, uh, we'll be doing quarterly reimbursements, uh, instead of a one big lump sum, just to make sure that, um, we see that money coming in. We did have one firefighter resign in March and then, um, one call firefighter, um, applied for the full-time position, already certified, already a paramedic. So, uh, Firefighter Saccala did a week of days and he's on shift already, so it's good. Transition and discussion planning, which obviously works out well budgetary wise, kind of works as well. Uh, equipment updates, everything, uh, not how what is going well. Uh, we did get a mass, uh, Department of Fire Services grants, and we were able to get a sliding unit for the back of our UTV that we can take into the woods. Uh, hopefully we won't have to use it as much as we did last year, um, but it's, it's not starting off, um, very well, so. Uh, all the equipment's going well. We're expecting the new angles, uh, quarter one of twenty twenty-six. And we were also awarded recently a student education grant, uh, which allows our firefighters who are trained, uh, in the safe program to go into the school system, the joint, um, grant with Essex. So, we go into the, all the schools and we try to get kindergarten through third, we go into each grade, um, quarterly. Uh, so we, we can do that. We also, uh, got senior save money, uh, which we utilized last year for our lockbox program, which was a big hit, and we still have, uh, people that had signed up for them and they were on a waiting list. So, once that's, uh, executed on the state side, uh, we will, uh, try to go through that list and then promote it for any boxes that we have left. Again, that's a regional grant between Manchester and Essex as well. Uh, budgetary wise, we're right on, uh, target. Um, we're eighty-one percent through the year as of today, uh, and we're seventy-eight percent expended on our salary budget and seventy-seven percent expended on our operating. Uh, we're right on track.
John?
Yeah, okay. Well, great. I've, I've, I've read the reports, chief, and, uh, they're very complete, and we, in fact, all of us appreciate the fact that you've got regular reports that keep us up to date on all of that.
The monthly reports are great.
Yeah. So, uh, things are, are running very, very smoothly from all aspects, budget-wise, staff, et cetera. I did notice that there is some turnover in the staff now. Is that going to affect your budget projections? Because now you're out probably looking for replacement people and depending upon who you find.
Yeah, so we're, um, currently we're full, on the full-time, uh, side, we have one personnel, a long-term, uh, uh, injury. Um, I expect probably in the fall that, uh, he'll be coming back. But our staffing mechanism, there's four firefighters assigned every group, and we're able to drop to three without incurring overtime, so that's worked out, um, very well. Um, and with the call firefighter positions, we have the applications open until Friday, March second. We had five applications already because as Phil Saccala moved up, that opened up a position on the call department. Uh, we do have one firefighter, um, that we anticipate will be, uh, leaving us to go to another department. And we have some applications already in, uh, for, to create a hiring list for the next two years, just to be a little bit more proactive. And we do have, uh, some certified firefighter paramedics on that list as well, so, uh, everything looks, the forecast looks good.
Okay, so the, the budget looks stable in terms of how this is going to work out. Great. I think you're doing an excellent job.
Yeah, I will echo that. Um, I I like everything about the training and the proactive approach to the hiring. Um, I saw the postings, uh, you know, on the social media for that. I think that's an excellent idea, so thank you for doing that. I had a question around, um, the brushfire risk, um, because we already had one on one twenty-eight, not too many weeks ago. Um, and we were asked, you know, at our last meeting to declare a drought and tell everybody to stop watering. And so I wanted to get your perspective on two things, um, well, actually one thing in particular. When we stop watering, right, that must elevate the risk for fresh fires, I would assume, or not necessarily.
Certainly, because what we're watering typically is not a high hazard. It's our grasses, we're not, um, you know, if we were watering the wood, our wood lines around our housing, um, then that would add a little bit of mitigation, but typically people are just watering.
Okay.
It looks nice and that's even low lying, so it's, it doesn't.
That's good to know. Then my second question is, um, you talk a lot about prevention, and what I've heard you talk about is prevention more around structure fires. I'm wondering if there's any partnership with like M E C T or some of the nonprofits that take care of our wilderness areas to make sure they are maintaining those areas properly, so it minimizes our brushfire risk, because the powder house stuff is right in the center of town and.
So, we, we, so we did, uh, last year, we, um, participated in the Cape Town Regional Forest Fire, uh, Assessment. Uh, as part of that, we came up with kind of the areas of highest risk based upon growth, how it interacts with civilian life and the density around that. Uh, what we've been doing and we're going to start doing, uh, now the springtime is here, our crews are actually going to go out and, um, you know, twenty years ago when I was here, we used to be able to drive a truck around most of these trails for access. Uh, a lot of them are overgrown.
Right.
Uh, so we're going to go out, identify the biggest risks and try to mitigate those, either with the property owners, um, sometimes the, um, conservation, uh, will help us and, I want to say green belts.
M E C T.
Yes, thank you. And, and they're proactive, so they, they've been, um, we've just had emails going around a couple of weeks ago about gate access.
Okay.
Make sure that we have easy access through the gates and things like that. So, the conversation's ongoing, um, and fluid.
Okay. Thank you.
The powder house is interesting because it's town land.
It's town land and, and, yeah, sorry, but I thought M E C T was respons, is M E C T is not responsible for maintaining that?
I think they own maybe one tract of that.
They only one tra, okay.
But the majority of that is.
So, then who in our town, because is it D P W or what, like?
I haven't gotten into that, to be completely honest with you. I know a lot of times we did the parole last year, they were, they were pretty open. There was a couple of things that we. And if there, if there's small branches here and there, our crews will handle it.
Yeah, there were a couple of big trees that fell down.
Yeah.
Those are trails I walk, obviously, so, and, and, you know, they were there for long periods of time and just wasn't clear who was maintaining it, yeah.
So, I will check into that.
I'm, I'm sure it's the D P W that would take care of it, but perhaps they're, they have less of an eye to what is a risk.
Yes.
That's a good way of.
Yeah, it used to be volunteers years ago, but that was a long time ago.
Thank you.
All right?
Nothing.
Yep.
I'm good. Thank you. Everything looks good and appreciate your work.
Yeah, just, you know, I, I know, uh, Todd and I mentioned it every, every time we meet with you, but the cooperation between all the town departments is great. Um, last weekend, we did an active shooter drill with the police department. We had Essex Police and Fire, Rockport Police and Fire, and, uh, Hamilton Police and Fire, so the the training and the collaboration, not just between Manchester, but our, our neighbors is pretty impressive, so.
To that point, I think that, I like to think I could be wrong, that our public safety would be the envy of any small town.
Yeah.
I think, uh, we've set a pretty high standard. Now you guys got to keep to it.
Yeah. But. I, I, I mean, the staff, the staff in both the police and fire, they're.
Harvard, I mean, it's every, even D P W, even D P W. The, every, every face, every town department that's the face of the town interacts very well with each other. And it's, it's obvious, I think that, uh.
And, and it's not just on the surface. It's, it's true. It's deep rooted, you know, um, I can call, check it, you know, till about the morning I have a problem, it'll be fixed.
Yeah. It doesn't go unnoticed by this board. Thank you.
Congratulations, you passed.
Good for another three months.
Yeah. It's like a parole lawyer.
Okay. The next item, uh, is the town administrator in transition. Um, it, it's under quarterly reviews, but maybe Greg, you would share your thoughts?
I'm sure, happy to. Um, so obviously, the last few months, I've been focused on wrapping up budgets and getting everything ready for the annual town meeting, as well as a fair amount of work getting the, um, Mason P N S and other documents across the finish line. We're, we're awfully close and hopefully we'll get there in another couple of days. So, looking ahead, uh, you know, rapidly approaching the end of June, it seems, it seems like as we get closer with time accelerates. Um, so, so really wanted to focus, uh, and hear from you what you would like to see, um, as part of that transition. Obviously, I'll be working, uh, with the department heads and I'm sitting down with them over the next two weeks here, just identifying where their significant projects are and what we can finish up before Tony comes on board. And then I'll be preparing information and putting together, uh, materials, uh, for Tony to, to pass the baton on to him as, as he takes over, um, the projects that will still be ongoing. But if you have any particular, um, concerns or want to flag particular issues, I'd, I'd love to hear from, from you on that as we prepare, um, to make the transition as smooth as possible.
Jeff?
I think the biggest thing is just setting up a good roadmap for Tony to look at where we've been and where we're going and and all that, so that's the most important thing at this point.
Not just what each department wants, but some sort of a progression and.
Yeah, right, which I think we, we kind of have, but maybe just, uh, some of Greg's side of it, so Tony can work moving forward.
Brian, if I have you heard anything?
No, I'm trying to cut the, uh, I think it's squared away for the, uh, meeting on Monday, on Friday morning.
Okay.
So, I apologize.
That's fine, but do you have anything that you'd like?
No, I think that, I think that, uh, the, everything I've heard, uh, it's, it should be a very smooth transition, and Greg said he would make himself available, uh, you know. So, I think that I'm looking forward to, I think it's going to be my opinion, my impression, based on what I knew about Tony, which is very, you know, what I've heard and what I, this conversation with Greg, uh, it should be seamless as, as possible. Now, I don't think we're going to go with it. I don't see any roadblocks for it.
Um, so, yeah, usually, um, these transitions are smooth when the person who is departing leaves behind a very strong team. And I think Greg has, is leaving behind an extremely strong, uh, team, set of department heads. Um, and, and they will ensure, um, more than anything that, that the transition is smooth because they're going to keep doing their jobs well. Um, I would say I think it's important to help Tony, um, I think he's going to be, he's going to want to get to know people, right? So, Greg, to the extent you can, there, there are things that you do that we don't see, right? And so that's, and, and that the, the residents don't see either. Who, who are your go-to people? It might be, um, people outside of town that, that Tony needs to work with. So, I mean, it certainly, I hope you're preparing a list of people he needs to get to know, right? Um, to help him be successful. Um, as far as the projects go, you know, like I said, I think that the department heads have that all well in hand. But certainly the, the culvert project getting started, um, not long after Tony arrives is probably my biggest, um, worry bead, but we, we want to make sure that gets off to a really great start. And I think around the time he is here, arrives, or hopefully before then, we should be able to be communicating to the residents about that project. So, I think it's a good, um, test case, if you will, for maybe public outreach, um, you know, the, the more you can get him up to speed on that particular project, I think the more, because he's going to get asked about it. He's going to go, want to go out and meet residents and meet people, and everybody's going to be asking him about it. So, I would think that's a critical thing to, to get him up to speed on, and also during the summer, when he arrives, we should be actively working the school budget issue for next year. Whatever happens this year is going to happen. But we can't wait until the summer's over to start talking about the school budget for next year. We need to be working it now. So, I would like to see some, um, information flow and engagement. Yeah, we have two big bones that come to.
The culvert project. What is our this is not directly about Tony, but this is something that he, he's going to need to deal with. What happens if the brick grant goes away? How can we prepare?
So, you know, plans, Plan B for that. B and C, one will be to talk to our state folks and see if there's any other grants that we can apply for and see what it will be. We're doing that now to see if we can position ourselves. The other fallback, though, is is having a special town meeting and and bonding for that project. If that money is called back, the the project has to happen. It's we don't have a choice. So we will, I think Plan C is to seek voter approval for a bond to replace those dollars.
Okay. John?
Yeah, a couple of things. One is the reorganization. When when does that officially kind of fit together, Greg? Is that really dependent upon obviously the the vote at the town meeting and is that going to be official like July one? Or is it kind of semi official now?
Well, some of the work is is getting ready now in terms of the, you know, for example, getting a new job description written for for the new accounting clerk and working on job descriptions for the department facilitators, you know, who are those clusters, those department clusters and having someone, one of the department head being responsible for the cluster. So we're working on some job descriptions now. But it will be up to Tony to implement those because it does start in the new fiscal year.
Okay, well, I I just bring that up. I think there has to be a sensitivity with regard to that, different people. The the team you've got is very strong, as Kathy had mentioned, rearranging things a little bit. And there may be some expectations. People aren't sure what they're, you know, exactly who they're going to say, what they're going to say to who, when and how. Things will move around a little bit. And he should be aware of that. You're certainly got a much better feel for how it's going to fit together, but he needs to be oriented to that. The other thing I know that Tony is going to be here for a few days at least prior to your departure. But certainly, I think high on the list is how much interaction are you going to need with him after July, after July one? I know that you're flexible on that and you've got to get a feel for that. And perhaps schedule some time that you can talk and discuss how things are going to work out going forward.
My guess is that we'll know a lot more after Tony has been visiting for a week and and.
I think that's typically something the new leader would draw.
It's between really the the two of them to figure out what what's going to work.
I'm fine with that, you know, I'll I'll take Tony's lead and what what he would like. I'm I'm flexible.
Are you planning any long trips immediately?
Not not extra long, no.
Anything else on transition or? Great. So we go to the town meeting preview. I will be making some remarks at the beginning. You recognizing that we're losing to major portions of the town. Maybe their last town meeting, maybe not. Probably almost certainly in case of Greg, because I don't think even if the school vote fails on March, March, May 12. I don't think we can get another town meeting in before July 1st. And.
Yeah, I would just, yeah, I would just comment that let's let's focus the town meeting for Alan.
Yes. Of course. Okay, Article one is the reports that should go very smoothly. Article two is is the salaries. Usually gets a laugh and not much else.
Can spend a while.
Actually, it's pretty much can, give back it. The Article three is the North Shore Agricultural Technical School. Jeff, you're going to move it. Are you going to speak?
Only if somebody has a question, but yeah, I mean, I'll be prepared, but.
And then the operational budget is Article four. And I think Sarah will talk about any any question. Can Sarah or Greg handle any questions on that? Do you anticipate anything?
No, not in particular. I mean, there there may be a question or two. We we highlighted in the report, the the staffing, you know, the the new accounting clerk and the boosting the full time, the the clerk and the town clerk's office, but other than that, I really don't expect a lot of a lot of questions.
The notices have said bring your finance committee report with you. We only got one per household. Are there going to be a few copies or some copies at the at the meeting?
Yes, yeah.
Right. Article five. Where, Greg, where do you anticipate questions?
You know, there may be questions about the rotunda and its funding. We have a bigger number in there because the one grant that we had hoped, we're not very optimistic for, so we wanted to backfill that. There's a bigger number for paving than we normally have seen. Again, there may be some questions regarding that. And then I do want to point out that included in the article is the capital exclusion. So six hundred and sixty thousand, that's part of the D P W facility planning. And so in the motion, that will be highlighted and that it is dependent on a ballot ballot approval. So there'll be a a capital exclusion ballot question come come May 20th.
Anyone else, has anyone else heard? Any discussion of the capital?
I I expect questions on line Adam 13. The renovations for the senior center. I think it would have been nice if we could have labeled it in hindsight. You know, building renovations because part of it is for the town offices in that in that building, not just for the senior center. So in hindsight, it would have been nice to label it that way.
Okay. Is that something that I we could ask Sarah Melish to include it in her remarks as when she moves this?
I'm not sure. I I just, I don't know that she needs to talk about it, but be prepared to talk about it.
I think it was asked on social media once and then we addressed that already.
Yeah, the only questions I've heard is people talking about the rotunda.
And Article six is going to be handled by the school committee and the superintendent. There don't seem to be any seconders for any of the zoning articles.
Yeah, I'm assuming that that Alan is working that out with Sarah.
I don't think we have much to say about any of the zoning. Yeah. Which brings us to Article 14. Which John?
Water, yeah. That's a moving target, isn't it, Greg?
A little bit, it is. I apologize for that. So we had so the motion that you had before you in the packet. We will not be moving the last paragraph there that talks about watering one day a week. So that was the moderator felt that.
In the warrant?
Not in the warrant, in the motion.
In the motion, okay, yes.
In the motion, that's that's I think that was in the packet, yes.
Yes, sixteen, bottom of page sixteen, top of page seventeen.
So so that, yeah, that that paragraph that suggested adding language about one of the options for restriction being watering just one day a week. It's something that the state would like to see in our bylaw. Alan felt that, given the wording of the original article, that that was beyond the scope of that original language. So we'll have to take that up at another meeting.
Okay, so I mean, there are are some changes that are are going to be made to the article, actually, the article in our bylaws. Do we still create a handout for people to pick up? Because the article is not long.
Right. The feet, Alan felt it would be fine just to have that up on the screen, that Tiffany will have the wording of those two of those two additions. So they're they're the two relatively easy inserts that are being proposed in addition to.
I think there is supply in two places. We had spoken about the second place and then, of course, the non-essential outdoor water use.
Right, right.
So those are three places.
Right, those three things can be highlighted on the screen.
Fine.
Alan thought that would be simple enough and reduce the amount of paper people are trying to trying to juggle in the seats.
I agree. Okay, so I I'm prepared to make some comments into that regard because, of course, what they have in their warrant is not reflective of what we're going to be voting on exactly.
Right, it is it is a it is a change from what they have in the booklet.
Yes, okay. So I'll make some comments within Alan's timeframe of two minutes.
Correct.
Then there's Article fifteen. It is the C B C. I suspect there will be some questions about the Affordable Housing Trust. They've had two articles in cricket recently explaining first, what is affordable housing and then why it was easy to get to the S H I and and protection from 42 housing. But I'm not sure that everybody will have read those and I think a lot of people wonder why we're giving. Who is going to answer those questions?
I think the Affordable Housing Trust people will be addressing that. I think both Muffin and John Furback are are prepared to do that. And it looks like Jack Burke has his his hand up.
Good evening, everybody. Either John Furback or Chris Olney will speak to that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All that should be pretty straightforward.
The the good the good news there is we're we we had two and a half years left. We are ahead of schedule in that. Yeah, I was just going to say, I was going to qualify that to see what happens with the stock market here, but nonetheless, with any luck, it'll be be fully funded ahead of schedule.
Article seventeen, which is property tax break for certain veterans. Any problems there?
And again, the assessors are prepared to answer questions that people may have.
Revolving funds. Greg, I think you have explained this any number of times. If anyone asks.
Yeah, happy happy to step in.
Article nineteen, which is trying to rein in the organic health.
I'll be speaking to that and I'll send you on that.
Article twenty is is poisoning eagles or rather not poisoning eagles. I will speak to that. And twenty one is being withdrawn by the petitioner and I may take a minute and a half to explain what the intention was and why it's being withdrawn. And twenty two. I think we will pass over. Okay. Anything else on the?
Yes, just one thing. So Greg, I know that Alan is responsible for the town meeting. However, you are responsible for the D P W and at one point, we had the logistics corrected where when we're sitting up on the stage, we didn't have to worry about backing up our seats and falling off the back. Somehow we lost that recipe and I will tell you, I will not sit on that stage again unless it is safe. So they need to make sure we can pull our chairs back when we stand safely and not have to worry about that. Please make sure. Yeah, not interested. So somehow we lost the recipe for the fall meeting. I really don't want to repeat that for the spring.
Well, we're in two different locations, yeah.
They know what the requirement the requirement is, safety. And that was an unsafe situation. So please make sure that's him.
If you fall, be capped, capped by the seat.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen. Won't sit on this thing. Thank you, appreciate it.
Is the separate voting computer configured?
Uh, yes, I believe so. I know that they were working on that this past Friday, and I believe they got it all done. I'll double check. I know that, I know they, they got all the clickers scanned in and and verified working. And I believe they got the computer all set up, and I will double check.
Okay, I, I guess we could continue to work with Tiffany's computer if we have to, but at some point, it would be nice to have two computers that are prepared to run the, the, whatever they call them till so we can, because going back cards and counts and it's just.
It should be just dedicated.
There should be two, there, I believe that we have purchased two.
Correct.
The, yes, dedicated to that.
Yeah, the max.
And, and if, God forbid, we have to have two rooms again sometime. Right, okay. Anything else on the town meeting? Um, we had some updates. Yeah, yeah.
Yes, I already mentioned the DPW situation with the signs. They will start installing new meters, and they do have a first tranche of the new meters in town here, and they're going to be putting them into the public buildings, starting, I think, probably next week or the first of May. And then broad distribution or broad installation at, at the residential level will probably start in about one and a half to two months or so. Something like that. They're still settling on a contractor to do that.
So, I'm sorry, question on that. So when do they plan to communicate with people? Because you just can't walk into somebody's house and change them either. So what is the communication plan for the residents?
I don't think they are quite that far yet because they haven't settled on, on a group who's going to install that, but the group that does, the contractor, knows that's a pretty critical part of their job right out of the chute. Because I think we have discussed that before. So the contracting group is going to be dealing with that.
Right, so DPW is talking to Tiffany and getting some materials prepared. And once we have a contractor selected, who will be doing the actual install, they'll be, Tiffany will be working closely with them and getting out, getting out communications to people ahead of time and getting schedules. So they'll, they'll have to be scheduling times, at least to happen.
Right. So initially, they're gonna do the public buildings, and then they're also going to do the meters that were part of the pilot program. All those people are aware what's going on because people went into their houses and put in the pilot meters. So those are getting swapped out for the actual meters that will be used, and then the, then the contractor will be kicking it, so. Council on Aging, it's all about the Mason's purchase and sale. That's all, that's, that's the only topic there. We, we talked about that. The Historic District Commission had a meeting last week. It was kind of interesting. I've been on that commission for a number of years. I'll say probably eight. This is the first certificate of hardship. And usually, there's certificates of appropriateness that get issued for, for whatever the projects are, for whatever the people are doing. And it was the first hardship certificate that, that the committee had issued, and it all had to do with a house that was on the subsidized housing list. And when you're on the subsidized housing list, you have the opportunity to take advantage of various funding opportunities, one of which is windows. And they had the opportunity to have all new windows in their house, which, of course, were triple paying, very efficient windows. But I won't say they're exactly fitting with regard to the Historic District Commission requirements. And, you know, the, the, the homeowner came before us and said, well, what can you do for me? And we came up with some sort of an appropriate settlement with regard to putting up appropriate monuments, because really, most of the houses are eighteen fifty to nineteen hundred, they're six over six, and the, the windows that were being provided had no panes, I mean, just a single pane, which wasn't necessarily appropriate. So that'll work out. I've gone to Mark, and I was just curious, how many other houses in the historic district are on SHI? Because there are others that might ask about that, but I thought that was interesting.
Yeah, they can't, because of the way the windows are constructed, they can't make true divided lights.
No, a true divided lights has middle.
And I don't think they can even put it inside the.
That was the key.
Between the two, they have to be snap one on the front and back.
And they can make them permanent, but they can't make them inside the panes, which is what we insist for a regular applicant. So we had to kind of.
The gas that's in there.
Skip over that, but I'm sure there are other houses. I don't think there are a lot in the, in the district, but there are probably some others who may be coming to us. I don't know.
It's all paid through National Credit, right?
I don't know.
Yeah, Action, I have to deal.
Yeah, Action, I think.
It's Action, and what happens is we all pay for it.
I think it was Action Inc.
Take a look at the bottom of your utility bill.
That's massive.
That's, but there's a, there's a line item, and that goes into a big pot. And then it just, anything that's affordable.
Right. That's it, me.
Okay. All right, now, how many room lifts tomorrow morning? So, and like, that was canceled.
Uh, Pox and Rec, they're ramping up for the summer. Uh, the Fourth of July committee, the parachute is coming back. And, uh, that's, I think, that's about all the news that's fit to print.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, dogs are on the beach, so.
Dogs are off the beach.
Dogs are off the beach and all is quiet.
Pickleball, I haven't heard, other than the initial one incident prior to the, someone getting on the course earlier than, you know, season. I haven't heard anything. Not today.
I noticed a big flurry of bits coming out.
Oh, yes, there was a request. It was, uh, you know, a.
Oh, just something that we might think about in the future is since Tiffany has had a very successful experiment with AI transforming a recording into a summary of making it easier for families that don't have professional.
Yeah, those are, I mean, the woman that translates, takes, you know, she's a volunteer.
Yeah.
And she's scribbling, and, but they're, it's actually, the discussion did come up at the meeting last week, and I think the cost was, I don't know what the cost had to.
For the AI?
The AI.
We already, we updated, so we, we can cover the Parks and Rec now.
But we need to get a recording.
Right, they need to get, they need to record their meetings.
So can that be done?
Recorded, then why?
It will.
Yeah, they need to be recorded in the Zoom cloud, so.
So the, yeah, so that was, that was discussed, because I think requests, and I don't know.
But the Zoom, it, it is a, is it a hybrid meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so you have the complete, complete body of, of recording.
And so at some point, Cheryl will figure this out, will figure it out.
Yeah.
It's an awful lot of work.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I don't know what the other, I don't know what the other, you know, we were talking about levels of committees.
Yeah.
The, uh, you know, primary ones would be Select Board and Planning Board.
And Finance.
And, like, secondary might be ZBA, and maybe that's, and ConCon. And tertiary would be the Pox and Rec.
The ones that have quiz and judicial.
Yeah, so that, that was discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do fifteen meetings a month, so.
That'll be helpful.
That's.
Uh, again, that's them.
Okay. Um. The, you know. So, hey. Had a public hearing, um, at, I think, five, before their six o'clock meeting. And there were two people there whose names I did not know and whose names and faces were. So there certainly are people in the community who are arguing for the school budget. Um, I think it's time to see, and then, because it comes out. If it's in any interest. Well. Hey. There, there's reason to worry about the school budget, and in particular, the overriding assets. And, but that, we're just looking at the, see.
Um, just like you're encouraging, uh, Pox and Rec, they also have started looking at reconfiguring Sweeney Park. Drainage, uh, some of the costs associated with, and bringing the full size, enabling a full-size soccer field there. So that's in the preliminary stages of discussion. After, no, it can't be. It has to be a, a turf, it has to be real grass.
Yes.
As opposed to turf field in order to qualify for some CPC.
Right.
And, um, so that's, and now they're just trying to figure out where the sun's gonna be in the bad eyes.
Okay.
So that's an ongoing, that's something that Nate's been working with, uh, Pox and Rec on.
Um, consent agenda. Which is the main minutes and the little needs for rain. That's towards here somewhere. But. There will.
Uh, move the board approved the Senate consent agenda items.
Yes.
Yeah, yes, Kathy, yes, for a, and, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, the town agenda is figuring to report.
All right, so, yeah, in your packet, there's a, a new declaration from the state lowering the drought to stage two. Again, I don't think there's any action needed at this point, given their conversation last time, but I did want to highlight that for you. If we get as much rain as they are predicting for this coming weekend, maybe you could, stage two can go away.
Are there, are there specific restrictions for stage one and stage two? We discussed the restrictions for stage three.
So under stage, um, under stage two, you can allow for outdoor watering by hand and by drip? That, that is something. But not sprinklers, correct?
So.
Is, is stage, excuse me, is stage two the same as level two, a stage level interchangeable?
Yeah, yes, I, I do have a change there.
Okay, fine. I see in the documents level, it's always a little confusing to me. Sorry.
Right, level. Should we somewhere announce what the restrictions are for level one and level two, in addition to having a bylaw about level three?
So we talked about having a pretty simplified graphic that explains what's, what's allowed under each of the different levels. And I, I know that Tiffany has that, well, she hasn't completed, but I know that she was working on it.
Since we are now in a level two, should we let people know, um, now what they're allowed to do? And not.
From an informational point of view, we certainly can. My sense was, you didn't want to formally declare, declare it just based on your last meeting conversation.
Okay.
But happy to, e- either way, we can, if you want to declare, that's, you certainly can.
I, I was. I was not aware that there were three levels of drought. And I was not aware that there were different restrictions at each level on.
So why don't, why don't, for next meeting, aren't we, yeah, why don't we prepare that for you for your next meeting, so that you can see those, what the differences are between the different levels, so that you'll have that, and then we can also get that posted. And that'll, I think, help people understand what the levels mean and what they can and cannot do.
Right, so I mean, I, I think we didn't feel the need to take any formal action because our water reservoirs are, were fine and they're still fine, correct?
Correct, correct.
So it's still probably helpful information, because, for example, I just saw in the news, I thought it was today. I thought we were in a dry stage as opposed to, you know, I thought we were in a mild drought, you know, so the weather people report it a certain way. That, I don't know if that's different than what the state is reporting, but when you see something like that, there is nothing to tell you, you know, to do anything differently. So just the town presenting Tiffany's information matter-of-factly on its, you know, social media platforms, et cetera, I think would be appropriate without us taking any actions.
So, yes, why don't we work on that and get that out to everybody?
Everyone going to stage three, what we should do for the page, I don't know, you can't go in. And have the blue light flashing during the summer. Blue light flashing, state three drought.
You guys?
Right, and all these all courses can.
Yeah.
We, I. Sorry, Greg, then.
No, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine, no problem. So moving on, the, getting the SHI or subsidized housing inventory list updated. You know, long struggle here. The, the fundamental problem with, with the apartment complex, the Powerhouse Hill apartment complex is when the CDC went through the process, they did that prior to having it approved from the state. And so there's a question about the completeness of the lottery system that they use, and that they have people who are renting who went through a lottery system prior to the state approving. So the state is trying to do it retroactively. They've, they keep coming back with more and more questions every time. And so we keep providing more information. It's, it's not our information, it's from the CDC, so there's been a lot of back and forth. Uh, they are doing a final round of reviews now. I don't know if they will sign off on the process that was followed. They may require that the lottery process that was developed be modified and that it be used going forward, and then it'll have to be on a, you know, tenant-by-tenant basis as, as the units turn over before they get officially added to the SHI. I'm hopeful that we won't have to do that, because that's disappointing to be waiting this long. But that, that may be the case. So it's still under review. Mark Resnick is in, is in pretty constant contact with them the last few weeks here, and we'll continue to do so until we get a final, a final resolution. So I know that's been frustrating for people, and that's, that's the update I can provide. Any, any questions on that? I'm sorry, someone. Um, moving on, I commented a little earlier on the Culvert. The FEMA funding through their, what's called the BRIC program, building resilient infrastructure in communities is what BRIC stands for. So FEMA has announced, uh, the program is no longer going forward. They have ended the program. They announced that projects that the monies have been obligated to the. the monies have been obligated to the states. It's sort of, it goes through FEMA to MIMA to the municipalities. So the funding that we were awarded has been obligated to the state. So we thought we were, we were in the clear. There was a new missive from FEMA came out on this past Thursday that said if a project isn't actually under contract with the construction company doing the work, then it may be called back. So we're trying to get clarification of that, been reaching out to our congressional delegation to see what help they can provide. The state has also been very helpful in trying to track things down, but we don't have a definite word yet. So we will continue to work on that to see if we can make sure we can secure and maintain hold on to those funds. It's about four and a half million dollars that's at risk here. So it's obviously a big chunk of money for us. And will be very important to try to secure it so that we can proceed with the project as, as scheduled. So again, I need to say, stay tuned and we'll continue to fight hard for those dollars.
Greg, where are we in? Putting it out to bid?
Yeah, that's being prepared and we're still waiting for a couple of permits, but I told them to go ahead without those final permits in hand. We can always do an addendum to the bid documents. If, if there are some new conditions that the permits impose. So that is in the works now and we hope to get it out on the street in fairly short order.
That'd be helpful.
Then my last note here is on the mornings and doing an audit of the transactions. Got a very high estimate of cost from our auditing firm to do this work, really prohibitively expensive. And so we need another game plan, whether or not we try to use perhaps the committee, the Harvard Advisory Committee and yourselves or, and or use some in-house, in, in in-house staff time to, to do that review. So I might suggest that a couple of you work with me to come up with a game plan going forward so that we can have a, have a good resolution to, to the questions that were raised and making sure we have a good process in place going forward. The motions are continuing to run pretty high, at least a couple of individuals. And so I, I do suggest that if one or two of you could work with me and putting a game plan together, that we work on that in the next couple of weeks. So I would welcome, welcome maybe a couple of you to help with that.
I'll, I'll work with you, Greg.
I'll do it too.
That'd be great.
All your time permitted.
So we'll, we'll, we'll put together a game plan and get back to folks.
Sounds good.
All in favor?
Seven forty.
This is a.
I apologize. You know, I just got done saying that.